In order, we'll stand for a moment of silent reflection and the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Busker.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now review and approve the agenda. And the agenda includes FEMA reimbursement worksheets and the county's contribution to the removal of debris from the Hawthorne ditch. Does anyone wish any changes to the agenda? If not, do we have a motion?
We have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. So, we had an indication that Sheriff Tome wanted to be on the front end of this discussion, but we'll turn this over to Dustin.
I'll start talking and the sheriff or representative come in, well, I'll yield the floor. All right, so, not surprising, this is just a little, I'm sorry, Dustin Willett, Pennington County Emergency Manager, not surprising this is somewhat convoluted, so let me start by trying to clear up what you have in front of you, because it took me all morning on the phone with our FEMA project specialist to get it clear in my head. A few weeks ago, I came before you with the project application, the subgrant application numbered PN 101. And two days ago, I got another application, and it wasn't until I put the two side by side that I realized they were both PN 101. So, let me try to explain the numbering system and what you have before you. I think last time, is everybody kind of clear on the alternative procedures that we went through? If you do so much work in the first 30 days, it was reimbursed at 85 percent. So much work in, from 31 to 90, it was 80 percent, and then you get to the normal, which is 75 percent. So that first PN 101 worksheet that came before you several weeks ago captured all the costs we had at that time for the first 30 days to be reimbursed at the 85 percent rate. And what's changed, they called that PN 101, and on the total sheet, it's listed as version zero. The new one that I gave you a couple days ago is still PN 101, it still has that version zero that you approved a few weeks ago, however, now it includes...
Which one of these two are you talking about?
This, the one, is this the new one?
It'll say up at the top, PN 101, debris removal, alternative procedures. You should have a PN 101 and a PN 102.
The PN 101 is one of six.
Correct.
And the PN 102 is one of five.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, that was a great way to distinguish those two. So, basically, the PN 101 project application covers, now, covers all of the alternative procedures, meaning the one, or the zero to 30 days and the 31 to 90 days. So that's now all included on the same application that we signed off originally on. It took me all day yesterday and all this morning to try to get my head wrapped around The only thing that has changed on the one you have in front of you, the one that we got two days ago, there is an amount that changed on that zero to 30 day amount. And that is on line, this is on page five of six, line five, the contract debris removal. The project specialists from FEMA got an invoice from buildings and grounds for some debris removal that they did during that first 30 days. So when we talked about this several weeks ago, that total amount on that line five was $41,755.31. The invoice from buildings and grounds that's now captured in that same line was for $1,718.75. So that new total is $43,474.06. So it's $1,700 and change more than what you approved several weeks ago, because they captured an invoice that came in late from buildings and grounds. So that explains that discrepancy in what's titled version zero. The next page, page six of six, this is what they term version one, which is all of the work that was done from 31 to 90 days, which is reimbursed at the 80 percent level. So, that's PN 101 that we'll be talking about today. PN 102, which is, as Chairman Peterson pointed out, is the one of five pages. This one is category B work, so this was for emergency protective measures. This first one covers debris removal, this covers the going out and getting people out of their cars and public sheltering, and the things we did those first couple of days as emergency protective measures. That's what's covered in PN 102. We don't have a PN 103, and we will not have a PN 103. That would have covered all the work done after 90 days that would have been reimbursed at just the normal 75 percent rate outside of the alternative procedures. Well, all of our work was completed within 90 days, so we don't have any debris removal that's going to be addressed under the normal rules. So there will be no PN 103. At some point in the future, we will have a PN 104, which will be donated resources, the volunteer time, the snowmobilers, all that, that will come before you at a later date. So hopefully that is clear as mud, clears up the numbering system that you see before you. Took me a long time to figure out why I was looking at two different PN 101s. So hopefully that explains why we're looking at that. So what we have before you today? The sheriff coming at all? What I have before you today is the current PN 101 that captures all of the debris removal costs, basically from zero through 90 days, and the PN 102, which covers the emergency protective measures for the entire thing. So with that, I'll be happy to stand for any questions.
So do they have more difficult forms? I mean, this, these are amazingly difficult forms.
I love acquiring new knowledge, and I like learning. If I never have to go through this again, we'll be okay.
I'm sure.
So are we talking about both of these now, or are we going to deal with them one at a time?
Correct, they both need to be dealt with. My guess is that the debris removal versus the emergency protective measures are somewhat different in scope, so if you want to address them each individually, they would each require a signature. So they probably each need to be addressed separately. If the sheriff does come in, his items are all covered under the emergency protective measures. So if you want to start with emergency protective measures, that way if he comes in, he can jump right in and talk about that. Totally up to you.
The 101, he's not involved in that?
Nope, the sheriff doesn't have any costs in 101.
All right, how about if we talk about that for just a little?
Certainly.
The labor, the straight time labor cost, that's for our employees.
Our force, yes, force count labor.
Pardon?
Yes.
Okay, that's for Pennington County employees?
Correct.
And the overtime for that is for Pennington County employees?
Correct.
The equipment rental, or the equipment, is that for our current equipment?
Let me read through, it could conceivably include both. That'll be for our equipment, correct?
All right.
Because anything else should be covered under contract.
On the second page, the labor again is for our employees?
Correct.
And the equipment is for our equipment?
Correct.
Do you know what the materials are for?
And then, one of five is separate.
Not off the top of my head, I'm wondering.
Well, that's fine. I guess I'll just, I'll just state my view on this, and then we can vote on it and approve it, I guess, but, you know, I said this before, and I'll just say it one more time, I'm not supportive of asking for help for items that we have budgeted for. It appears to me that what this is, it's just like, it's just like somebody going to the public defender, and they have enough money to buy their own attorney, but they want us to pay for their public defender. We don't agree with that, and frankly discourage that from happening. I don't think it's any different than people sticking their hand out and wanting someone else to pay their way when they got the money in the bank to pay their own way. So needless to say, I'm not going to be supportive of this.
And if I may, Commissioner, just to address your question previously from the material, I believe most of that is gravel related to creating the approaches to the carcass disposal pits.
Okay, thank you.
And repairing the roads leading to those pits.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments? Do we need to have separate motions for each, each packet? Like, separate motions for one?
I believe it'd probably be appropriate to address each packet separately.
Commissioner Davis, you kind of got in on this late, so maybe give you a little time to...
I'm okay, go right ahead, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
I did study it, I just had the date down in my book, the wrong date. Summary, I had it yesterday, I mean tomorrow, Friday.
In terms of the timing, C. Brian Mueller came in from Sheriff's Office, are you constrained by a 10:30 deadline as well? So we can go ahead this way. We're currently on something that doesn't pertain to your department, so...
Right, thanks.
Yep. Any other remarks from the commission? Do we have a motion relative to PN 101?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to authorize your signature on PN 101.
Is there a second?
Second. Just as a clarification, because of the way we turned the paperwork in, it would be my signature.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So then I guess we authorize the Director of Emergency Management to sign PN 101 in the amount of $149,102.50.
Is that okay with the second? Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I am going to support the motion that's on the floor for the time being, but I want to write if possible to bring this up at a later date, and if we're not using the money for the proper things to get it back to the federal government, as Commissioner Holloway stated.
Okay, any other remarks? If not, we'll have a roll call.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Holloway?
No.
Johnson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes. Motion carried. He will proceed with PN 102.
All right, and again, I apologize for the quality, this is the scan, the quality of the scan that I received from FEMA, I know it's hard to read at some point, but basically the scope of work that's covered by this subgrant application covers emergency response, search and rescue operations, this is the stranded motorists, getting people to the hospital if they really needed to get to the hospital, opening public shelters, delivering oxygen, delivering fuel during those first few days when we were so paralyzed. So this covers emergency protective measures, and there are, there's a law enforcement portion in here that covers, and I'm sure Chief Deputy Mueller can speak to it, the juvenile services center, the jail, the deputies that were on patrol, the alcohol and drug program, all of those agencies incurred costs, basically overtime costs and some other equipment costs that Brian can speak to regarding that. This also captures the costs of my department operating the emergency operations center, the contracts that we used to clear snow for the public shelter that we opened at Central High School, some of those types of costs, emergency snow removal to get some of those things open those first few days. So it goes beyond, none of this deals with cattle carcasses or trees, it's not debris removal, this is the emergency protective measures. And then, snow removal is captured in this. So highway and buildings and grounds both have costs that they capture during that, the snow removal costs for this are the first, basically not the first, but a 48-hour period. Basically, it started on Saturday, so Saturday and Sunday are typically what we're looking at here in regards to snow removal to get everybody dug out, is basically what those costs are. But I think Heine's here and can speak specifically to that if you'd like him to. If there's any questions for me specifically on the emergency management part of it, I'd be happy to stand for any questions. And that's the first amount that you see at the very top of page two of five, total contracted services, $27,263.63. Those are the charges that I incurred in the EOC through emergency management, and those are the ones that I could answer specific questions on if you had any.
On the revised draft, or updated draft?
This one didn't change. PN 102 should be the same PN 102 that you've always had in front, this is the first time we've seen PN 102.
But I do not have a page two. Do other people have page two?
No.
So page two would be like this one right here.
The first sentence on page two that I have says, "Snow clearing operations countywide at a cost of $27,263.63."
In this draft, it does not say revised, I do have a page two.
Okay.
So is that applicable to this, which one are we using here? Page two is not revised, is that...
And that's the one that's highlighted. The other one's...
But the one that's revised doesn't have all the pages on it.
Then there are page two.
And it also has a different amount than the original one we got.
So part of the question is, is the page two on the original unchanged, and would it then fit into this revised one?
Can I come see what you have?
Sure, sure.
Because I'm confused. Doesn't take much, I guess.
Don't feel alone.
We're really confused.
Page three is different than this page three.
See, on the update, it does move to this, and that's correct.
Two of five.
But...
Wow.
See, page two on the original one we got does fit after page one of the updated, if that makes sense.
Well, as long as there's no revisions on page two.
So I'll, I'm not quite sure what happened, but let me take responsibility for this. There shouldn't have been a revision for, oh, yes, I understand, okay, I'm tracking, too many PNs in my head.
What else would one expect from the federal government?
So the important part is the bottom line that we're looking at, page five of five, if it says that on the top, page five of five, there should be one that I have made notations over in the margin on, $29,000 and $215,000?
Yep.
Okay, that is the current revised total. Yes, the other one, again, that first one, I sent it out the second I got it, and I had a lot of questions in some of the language and some of the amounts, and we've made several changes with the FEMA project specialist. So the revised version, that total, where I wrote in the margin, is what is, should be currently before you for consideration.
So you think there really isn't a page two that goes with it, then?
There should, there should, I don't know why there isn't, I don't know why that wasn't included in the file. Would you like to take five minutes and have me burn copies of this so that you have that in front of you?
You have a page two in yours?
I have a page two in mine.
Maybe you could just make it's page two.
Yep.
Do you have all the other, page four and five and...
Yeah, we got three, four, and five, we got one, three, four, and five.
Perfect. Yes, let me, we'll get page two copied, so you have that in front of you.
That's all right.
So while we're waiting for that, if I could just ask a couple of questions. I would just like clarification, again, the labor charges, that's for our employees?
Yes.
The overtime, or the equipment charges, that's for our equipment?
Yes.
And so the equipment charges are $101,696.38, and the labor is $82,245.17, which is the majority of the $215,000 we're requesting?
Correct.
Thank you.
And I apologize for that page two issue, not quite sure what happened there.
Brian, do you have any input while we're waiting here?
Brian Mueller with the Pennington County Sheriff's Office, sorry I was late.
Don't feel alone.
All right. From the law enforcement side and our other divisions, we submitted for overtime only, no regular hours. There was, on the form that we filled out for the gentleman that came and visited with us for vehicle use for the law enforcement side, the only hours, the only vehicle use hours that we reported were the ones where deputies were actually working the overtime shifts. And then, our other facilities, again, we only reported overtime. And then search and rescue, we did report all of the equipment that we used through the storm, actual hours for those folks, and then their volunteer hours were captured separately.
Any questions for Deputy Mueller?
Do we pay the search and rescue people?
We do not.
I mean, you said you captured their hours.
Part of their form was to fill, capture all of our volunteer hours, and we just reported the time that they actually spent.
Okay. Those volunteer hours, you will have in front of you on that PN 104 application that you don't have yet.
It's on a different form. And then we reported our actual damages that we had on the search and rescue vehicle and a couple of our patrol vehicles.
If there are no questions, you must have clearly communicated.
Perfect, thanks.
Thank you. Heine?
Yeah, the 48-hour window, all our, all the labor hours is overtime hours. And when you want to talk about equipment, it's an equipment rental rate, we've had additional fuel, cutting edges, shoes on all the plows, it costs $800 to replace a cutting edge, it's about $200 for every snow shoe we put on that they slide on. So I mean, it's fuel and parts, and there's all kinds of stuff in that equipment, it's not just, it's a rental rate which is easy, FEMA sets the rates. Sometimes my rates are more than theirs, and sometimes it's less, but the FEMA sets the rates on rental of equipment, and it takes into all those factors, wear and tear, cutting edges, fuel, oil, so if you just want to lop out all the equipment expense, you're going to be ending up paying a bunch of that that was used up during the storm, those resources, so...
Mr. Chair, if you could. Heine, did you have to have a supplement to your budget at the end of 2013?
No.
To cover this?
No.
It was in your budget?
Yeah, because...
And absolutely, we should replace those items if they're used up, that's what we're here for, that's what we get this money to run this county for. We shouldn't be, we shouldn't have money in the bank, my point is, we shouldn't have money in the bank and then go ask for welfare from the federal government.
Any other comments or questions? Have you told us everything you want to tell us?
I think I have, I was just waiting for you.
Are we ready for a motion? Yes.
I agree with Commissioner Holloway. But if there was a way that we could separate out what it actually does cost us to, any equipment, and in gas, and in oil, I would be in favor of trying to get reimbursed for that. But the normal expenses that we're going to have anyway, we got search and rescue, that's what we buy that stuff for, you know, that's what we have it on hand for, and now we're going to charge the rest of the taxpayers in this country to use what we knew we were going to use it for, you know. I'm going to have to vote to accept the money, I guess. Last time I voted not to, and the papers seemed to disagree with us on that point. But I don't know if we could, if we could separate that somehow, which I know would be an impossibility probably, but I'd be in favor of doing that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would just encourage Commissioner Busker not to worry about what the Rapp City Journal says, because they're on both sides of the issue. One time, they'll criticize government for spending too much money, and the next time, they criticize you for not taking the free money.
Absolutely right.
So I just, I disregard them.
Anything else?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Dustin and Heine, is there any way, you too, Brian, I'm sorry, but is there any way that we can keep this money in a pot that doesn't go anyplace else besides what it's designated for on these forms? And then we can sort out how much money it actually cost us to do these repairs and prepare the fuel and all of that stuff at a later date, and then just send it back to the government, say, "We didn't need this," if that's what it takes.
I really don't disagree with that, except I bet you that they won't accept it, I bet there's no way to send it back to them.
So is this perhaps an alternative? We do have an emergency reserve, and we would reimburse the departments for the extra, but then what was left would go to the emergency reserve?
What, and I'll try not to misspeak here, and Heine will probably have to help me out. The bills have all been paid. The bills have all been paid, by and large, and most of that was charged to the Winterstorm Atlas budget that we set up from the word "go." Now, some of those charges then reverted back to Highway, so Highway did pay for some of these charges, and I don't know exactly what that breakout is. So, Highway paid for some of it. The rest of it was paid out of that Atlas budget that was set up. And we funded the Atlas budget with the Emergency Management Restricted Fund balance. So, in essence, the, the check's already been written, and it was written out of Emergency Management's Restricted Fund balance. So, the money that would come back, would come back into both the Emergency Management Restricted Fund balance and the whatever Heine, the, the contributions that, that Highway made to those costs as well.
Oh, it's a good question. I think it's been out of Highway budget, but when the check comes back, I suppose it's, the board's decision where you put it. If you want to put it back into your general fund, or you want to put it back into that emergency fund for future emergencies, I think that decision's up to you. I don't, I don't believe there's any requirement that it has to go to this budget, or that budget, or whatever. It's just gonna be your determination, once you have it, where you're gonna put it.
KJ mentioned, and I, we'd have to talk with the auditor on, on that. She, she mentioned something, and I, that's not my, that's not my area of expertise, so. But that's where the money's came from originally.
Well, I, I think, you know, Commissioner Busker is probably right. If we just mail a check back to the federal, federal government, say, "We don't need this." But if you send it to CC, all of our legislative committees, Senator Johnson, Senator Thune, Congressman Noem, and say, "This is what we're doing, and we want us, want you to see to it till it gets to the right place," if we do send any of it back. There's a way to do it, but...
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
You know, this discussion is, is part of a, a much bigger discussion that this whole country should be having. But, you know, we, I guess, have taken it upon ourselves to take a different look than a lot of people do. But if we're gonna take a look at this money, perhaps we should take a look at every other pot that, and other department that gets federal money and state money. Brian, you get any federal money? All the time. And so, to pick on one, I'm not sure, without looking at the whole scheme of things, and
You know, Mr. Chair, and I think this is one of the problems. There's a lot of people around this country that have best intentions in mind, but as soon as you start trying to think of a way to get it done, then it all reverts back to, well, basically, you can't do it.
We can do it. We can vote no.
But then, where do you do the stuff that you really did cost the taxpayers in Pennington County, after?
Well, the fact of the matter is, you know, we got through that budget, or got through that storm, and we budget for storms every year. And the fact of the matter is, we got through 2013 without having to supplement the sheriff's office budget. We didn't have to sup- supplement the highway department budget. You know, we could handle this storm. Now, if the storm would've come in March, and we had to do this in a timeframe, might be entirely different thing, because we don't know what the rest of the year's gonna bring about. But we know in this particular storm...
Anything further? I, I would just comment that the philosophy of, of our discussion is commendable. But when, when we have an employee whose position is directly identified as interfacing with the federal programs, we should either say, "You are our employee, and you will do our thing, and forget about the federal government." I don't think, I know I would not want to work with this paperwork and do what Dustin has done, and the, the way he's accomplished it, and then say, "Well, it's wrong. You didn't do it wrong, but the program is wrong." So...
I can speak, obviously, from my personal point of view there, where my job is to present you this information. My job is to jump through all those hoops, collect all the information, report the information, make sure I can present that information articulately to the board. But I, you know, ultimately, it, it truly is the, the commission's decision on, on what we do with it. So, as long as I've presented you with this information, I feel I've done my job. So, I, I wouldn't take any affront to any decision that the board would, would make regarding the information I've provided you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Dustin, we would not have had to put in rental of our own equipment. We would not have had to put in our salaries that we had in the budget, or overtime pay that we've already had in our budget. We would not have had to report that, and the dollar or figure would've been much less. Is, is that right?
Correct. If there would've been that type of direction prior to
Sure.
collecting all that information,
Yep.
then, then absolutely. We, we, we can selectively submit the costs that we want to submit.
Yep.
Absolutely. And in the future, I, I will probably seek some direction prior to, before the, the work is done.
Well, I'm probably not gonna be here in the future, so.
It was a learning experience for me. I, I, I didn't anticipate, should've, but didn't anticipate this type of philosophical discussion about it, so in the future, it wouldn't hurt at all to, to make sure that everybody was on the same page prior to, to moving forward.
It's entirely possible that you could face a commission that would criticize you for not getting everything you could.
Absolutely.
That's correct.
Absolutely.
So, with that...
God willing, I just won't have to deal with it.
It obviously isn't, it obviously isn't going to be this commission, though.
So, we're at a point of disposing of this issue. What's your wish?
The handwritten, just to clarify, was really just a transposition. Is that right? Instead of nine, 10, it was?
I can, I, if you'd want me to take just a couple of minutes to explain the, some of those differences. In the first version of this, there were some costs that were captured, that the FEMA project specialist had a misconception of what those costs were, and I, they weren't appropriate to be captured, so there were some costs we took out of it. And then, the other issue is, I, I got a very late bill from the Division of Wildland Fire Suppression from the state of South Dakota for, we used their, their snowcat, and then their personnel to operate that snowcat, and a couple other vehicles. And that was a $4,000 bill that, that I got very late in the process that we added to this.
Okay.
So, there were some changes in numbers, both down and up. Net, it actually went up from the original by a few thousand dollars. That was primarily because of the wildland fire bill that I received late.
Any other questions? Comments? Do we have a motion?
So, Mr. Chair, I'll just make a motion. I'll make a motion to authorize Dustin Willard, Director of Emergency Management, to sign the PN 102, and return it to FEMA in the amount of 215,686 dollars and 39 cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Again, I want to say that I'd like to retain the ability to bring this up at a later date. Exactly, I, the last one.
Anything further? Roll call vote, please. Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Brian. Next item is a request for county contributions and the removal of debris from the Hawthorne Ditch, and Jay, will you be leading the discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jay Alderman with the State's Attorney's Office. This item, there's a request before the commission to contribute to a cleanup plan for the Hawthorne Ditch that incurred a lot of damage and debris from the Storm Atlas that we've been kind of discussing here this morning. And one of the questions that was legally posed is whether or not the county's participation in this cleanup effort would be subject to the bid laws under Title V of the code. And frankly, when I look at it, it, it strikes me that it really isn't for, for this reason, I guess, among others. You know, typically, when the county's involved, like our expansion project next door to us here for a public improvement, you know, we have an interest or an ownership in that ground, that dirt that we're making this improvement on. Or, we're engaging some activ- in an activity on land that we have a direct legal interest in, whether it's ownership, or easement, or whatnot. In this particular case, the county has absolutely no legal interest. They have an interest, but not a legal technical interest in the ditch itself, meaning the Hawthorne Ditch Company owns the easement. They are the entity that has the right to enter and do whatever they need to do in that ditch for irrigation purposes. If the county were to be the purchasing agency here and go out and hire a contractor to come in on its own to clean up this debris, we'd have no legal authority to allow them to enter. We would be trespassing. They would be trespassing. So, we're really not the purchasing agency here. We don't have the legal interest that we're making the public improvement in. So, from a technical standpoint, frankly, I don't think the bid laws even apply. But to be cautious, and to be open, and it doesn't really matter, frankly, and I'm not gonna steal their thunder, but we have a representative from the Hawthorne Ditch Company, as well as our Highway Superintendent, that would tell you, even if bid laws did apply to the county's participation here, there is an emergency and an urgent public health, safety, and welfare matter that would override those bid laws anyway, and allow the county to, to participate and proceed without adhering strictly to the procurement procedure. So, we've drafted an agreement, and we can get into that later and talk about it, that recognizes the emergency need, the urgency, and timing is, is of the essence to get in there while the ground is still frozen, and so forth. So, I think we're covered either way. I don't thi- I believe, in my opinion, we're covered either way, so we're covering it both ways. And I know Heine will discuss the urgency, will reduce that to writing, will keep that in a file. Any contracts that are issued out of this will be kept in a file, and then under Title V, you have to do that for five years. That's all gonna happen anyway. But I just wanted to give you that, that background. And certainly, the county, now from a, an interest, meaning just in what we do as a county, certainly, we have, the highway has contributed runoff directly into this ditch. Through planning and zoning and building permits and whatnot, we've encouraged development that certainly contributes to the, the flow in this ditch. And given, I've seen some of the pictures. I don't know if the commission has, but it's, it truly is a mess. It's kind of amazing what this ditch looks like right now with all the debris in it. So, there's no question, you gotta get in there now, or you're gonna cause more damage just trying to get in to fix the problem, once the ground starts to thaw, even before the runoff starts to, to fill the ditch. So, I, I can truly understand the emergency nature of it. So, I guess I'll, I'll be quiet, and when we get to the point of the commission considering dollar amounts for its contribution and the terms of the agreement, then I can get back up here and answer any questions. But I guess I'll turn it over at this time.
Howard Rice, representing the ditch. Harold couldn't be here today. He has a daughter that's in the last stages of cancer, and it's not very good, so. I was over there to see him yesterday afternoon. We went out and got bids. Actually, we had four different contractors look at it. Three of them submitted bids, and as you've got them, and they're everywhere from 40,000 to 69,000 plus a little bit. I've had dealings with two of the three, with Hagel, done personal work for me when he first got started, and Frank's Tree Service we've used at my place, and we've used them at the Elska Golf Course. He is insured. He did have the low bid, and he is insured to $5 million, personal liability bond. He does good work. He's got the equipment. He's got the people to do it. Trust the gentleman. He's been very forthcoming. I took him last Saturday for the last portion of it, which we didn't do. The first one we did was strictly from Jolly Lane over to Reservoir Road, because we didn't know exactly where the county and the city's line is. And since then, we found out that the city actually has got some property that there water's flowing through the county into the ditch, up by the new elementary school in Rapid Valley. We personally don't have the money in our funds. We've got about $10,000 in our pot that we carry over for doing our normal cleanup, which we've done for the last, I've kind of been involved with this for the last 20 years, and we have never asked the county for assistance, but we didn't have to. And we can go in there in the spring and take out the one and two trees that fall in there, and, and then periodically during the summer, we have to go and clean out the traps, so to speak, that the county put in with the garbage gathers, and we haul that off. It's, this agreement is strictly for, to get this done for this particular time. And then, when that's over, we will take over from maintenance again, like we always do. But I really feel that later on down the line, as development keeps going to the east, that we need a long-term agreement somehow between the county and the ditch company, as long as it's in being, for future development, future drainage, whatever the case may be. Does anybody have any questions? I think you've got all the other documents in your packets there.
Just for clarification, they're gonna clean then from West River Electric to?
Out, it, it's called East Acres, I think. It'll go almost, it'll go into the country where just is open from then on, all the way to the airport.
Okay, and that, that part of the ditch is in pretty good shape?
Absolutely. And some, you know, as we go through this, some piece, some people are really great. They, they do a nice job, and they clean it themselves. And then you get the others that throw everything they got in there.
What about from, from West River Electric West?
I'm glad you brought that up. We can't, that's something we have to do with the city, and we're having a tough time making contact, so to speak.
With the city?
Yes. And...
Well, they're getting some of this free FEMA money. Maybe they'll give some of that to you.
I've got my fingers crossed. If we can get somebody that will make a commitment to at least sit down and talk to us.
I, just, Howard, just to let you know, recently, Richie Nordstrand approached me about this, and I said, "Well, well, the county is working on it."
We, yeah.
So, maybe he's...
We had him, and Harold took him, and nothing ever happened from it. And our last meeting, we had Dale Tek there, who of course, used to be with the county. He said, "I can understand your problem, but I don't have any money. You're gonna have to go to the city council." Well, our attorney has emailed the mayor and said, "You know, we've got a problem. I'll just let this..." He hasn't heard back. And then, I know Harold got ahold of Laurenti, who's also from that district where the ditch is. And I guess he called Harold, but then he's never called back. So, that, that's a part of it, too. If that part goes, that's not gonna be the county's problem.
Well, part of it could be, though, 'cause if we clean, you know, if we, we in Hawthorne Ditch and the county clean up from, from West River Electric East, you still got the trash west of you that's gonna come push on down the creek, or down the channel.
No, it'll stop, wait for it gets a, it'll stop it before it goes underneath the road, in the city's portion, and then it'll back up.
Okay.
And then, it'll back up. And probably, if we figured out the worst place it's gonna be, is New Millers, Eisman Trailer Court, and the Pipe Company there, because it sits up right above that, and when that blocks up, it'll, it'll just
Come right on down.
Come right over the hill, and then it'll go from Votek- And then it'll go from Votech down Center Street, and it'll, it'll be pretty interesting. That's our next, we've got to get with them, and in the process, hopefully, our attorney will be able to wrangle those people up a little bit. At least, they're aware of it, and the mayor's aware that there is a problem there. But that portion of it, from the fairgrounds to Altvale Road, basically, or the area.
I think you've got a few more, man. Well, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I sure don't have a problem declaring this an emergency, and I think we need to get in and do it. I only have one question, and it's probably Jay. It looks to me, and tell me if I'm wrong, that we're, this contract calls for Hawthorne to enter into a contract in an amount not to exceed $50,000, and we agreed to pay an amount not to exceed $50,000. So we're really not contributing. We are paying for it.
Because of $40,000.
Certainly, as you just heard, Commissioner Buscree, the county will be paying the significant portion of this. There is, if you read further in the contract, I know there's some additional fees that Hawthorne Ditch or potential costs that Hawthorne Ditch will be covering as their contribution. But obviously, they don't have the funds, as you've just heard, to cover the entire cleanup project, and they're coming to the county for that assistance. Obviously, it's up to the county to decide. The $50,000 was a figure put in there that's kind of covering what they've been learning from the return of the proposals they've received, dollar amounts. But county doesn't have to pay anything, or they can cover most of it.
I, too, have had Frank's do work for me, and I was very happy with him. How much, I don't have in front of me. How much is their bid for?
$40,880. Now, the reason that, in case something goes wrong or we get something in the process of doing this, we will do the disposal of all of the trash, plus for it. We'll do the mailings. We will handle the people that have, I've got the mailing list here. We'll send the letters out. Either Harold or myself will be there every day while they're working, at least stop in and make sure they're doing what they're supposed to do under the contract. And I'm sure Heine will have somebody appointed, and I don't know if Rex, the county's guy for compliance, I'm sure he'll want to periodically take a look, probably not as a contractor as much as the people that have kind of...
Have we decided where we're going to come up with the money?
Heine?
Well, I have an $80,000 drainage budget, and on an average year, I spend $40,000 to $45,000 maintaining the County Heights Ditch, unnamed tributary, mowing and all that stuff. So right now, we could use a portion of that budget for drainage. And if it, if we exceed that or whatever, we'll look at my budget at the end of the year and maybe look for a supplement from some of the drainage fees that's went into the general fund, because I'll probably be looking for a supplement for the new Underwood shop anyway because of that. So right now, I don't see any problem. If you approve the agreement today, my intent was I'd just send a voucher through the highway department, cut a check for the bid amount, give that to Hawthorne Ditch, and then they'll have the money available to pay the contractor on a weekly basis or two-week basis. I know the original agreement said we were going to directly pay the contractor. The intent of that was to save excise tax, but the county has to pay excise tax anyway. There's no way we can get around it. The only time we can be tax exempt is on sales tax. So I'd like to have the agreement amended that you have in front of you to just change the word contractor to Hawthorne for payment. Yeah, Jay has that. Jay had that revised on. There was one other change I'd like to see, just to make the wording better, and that's where number four, where it says Hawthorne Ditch is going to advise the landowners and renters of properties along the ditch and cleanup will be occurring by mail, a letter, and then my change would be to them utilizing property owner data provided by the county instead of database, what's database mean? And so I would insert, change "the" to "them," and then utilizing property owner data provided by the county. I'd be good to go with that, and if you approve this agreement today, I will just process the voucher, get payment to the Hawthorne Ditch Company. They should have that checked by the third week of February, and then they could go ahead and start paying the contractor and get him in there immediately, is my intent. I agree, it's an emergency. If we don't do something, we're going to have flooding. And the question was, what's going to happen from West River Electric while we have Twilight Drive, we have a siphon under it, we have a big trash rack. So what would happen? The trash would come to that rack, and then we would have to monitor that during a storm event, so...
Excuse me. Howard, does the $40,880, will that include the excise tax? Do you know?
No, I think it doesn't. I think that, I think that the contract says in there, "Plus tax."
Yeah.
So what is it, 2%? What does that come to? $8,000?
Okay. So then we really would need to add that.
2%? What's the excise?
Yeah, excise tax is 2%.
We'd have to add 2% to that $40,000.
Well, that, there may be a change order.
Yeah.
Because it's up to $50,000. The bid's only 40, but they put a $50,000 limit in there. I would anticipate, as we go through there, we're going to say we want this tree or we need this done. So there'd be a final change order, and...
Okay.
And so the excise tax should be covered in there. And my intent was, was to put a letter in the file. I'll just do a memo, kind of like I did to the board, that I feel this is an emergency because of debris, and it's going to cause flooding, and that would be in the file. We'll keep out at the highway department, and I could also supply that to the auditor, too. So we should have all the bases covered.
Do you people have our proposed letter?
We do.
Okay. And I have all the addresses here, so when it goes, we'll take care of the mailing and the...
Commissioner Davis? Mr. Chair, Howard, I don't have any problem helping the Hawthorne Ditch to clean up this mess, but I think you guys have some ownership of this also. And I don't know how you charge your irrigation people, what kind of money you make annually off of them, whether they can afford to pay more, or whether you've just been billing them to get by. I have a little problem with the whole county taxpayer paying this whole bill.
I understand.
Especially since Johnson Siding Community Center is a community organized function that collapsed during the storm, and they're not asking for anything in my area, and I'm not about to ask anything for them other than some forgiveness of the permit fees and things on that order for rebuilding. But that's my problem. I'd like to see you guys have a little money in this yourselves.
Well, we haven't, since the beginning of time, we've never asked the county for any help, even though they use it as drainage. And they do put their pipes into it. We've been able to handle it by our own maintenance every year out of our own pocket, which comes to be about $4,000 or $5,000 a year. Now, if you want to say, well, we've done it for 30 years, that's...
But the county has put money into it every year, too, that I know of, cleaning out the racks and the...
We clean out the racks. We clean up...
Heine, who's the people? We have a contract every year with people to do this.
We have an agreement with Harold's daughter, Claprich, that we pay $2,000 fee for, that's Twilight, Saturn, I believe, and I think there's three of them that we've been paying for those.
Okay. I'm mistaken.
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Do we have to have a motion to declare this an emergency? Or by approving this agreement where it basically says it's an emergency, is that good enough?
I think that's sufficient. And plus, as I say, in the statute, if the bid laws were to apply, it just calls for having a statement of the emergency that would go into the final, as you just mentioned, and that's going to be also done. Maybe as part of your motion, you could direct Heine to do that, but I think you have the agreement.
I don't disagree with Ken, but, you know, over the years, had we been forced to take care of the drainage on all our streets out there, it might have cost us more than $50,000. So with that, I'm going to violate all the rules and make a motion to enter into this agreement with the Hawthorne Ditch Company and have the chairman signature.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Mr. Chair? Yes. I still think the Hawthorne Ditch ought to have a little ownership of this. I'm probably going to support it. I know it's needed, but I just think they ought to show a little ownership of it. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, just to include in the motion that as, approve the agreement as amended in the...
I was going to ask...
Including Heine's additional comment and directing Heine to put the statement in the file regarding the nature and reason for the emergency.
I'm sure Karen has all that down.
So you have the amended language as well as that. Any further discussion? Do you want a roll call vote? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Who's that fellow with you, Howard?
I've never seen the man before in my life.
I thought maybe he was a spy.
Oh, yeah.
Are you a... He's not here from FEMA, is he?
Yeah. See, there's what we goofed. We should have gotten some money.
Since we have no further items on the agenda, I think we have, we're compelled to adjourn, but I haven't had a motion yet. Make a motion to adjourn.
Take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.